I usually sit in my chair with the two arms so I can get up but we can't obviously sit together so I've come on the settee and I'm sitting on cushions and I feel I'm wobbly I'm I'm just hoping if I have to get up you'll have to excuse the camera if it goes off because I shall need a hand but actually I feel okay thank you Bob I think you know fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, good.
Yeah.
It looks as if we are, the live feed is now working I believe so. We are live. Sorry?
We are live.
Yes, I've just seen a flag on that. So, good evening councillors and any members of the public who've joined this evening. Welcome to the March Faysley Town Council meeting. We're few on the ground tonight, we are four, so we are corset and we will proceed although I understand Olivia Shepherd will be with us shortly. Before we proceed, one slight matter on the agenda, I've noticed the, in error, item six has the budget 2021-2022. That was the unique or just the yearly item for the budget which, budget discussion and agreement which took place last month. So, item six is an error and we'll strike that from the agenda. But the rest is as standard. So, could I have, first of all, Bob, apologies for absence and any declarations of interest, please?
Mr Mayor, I've not received any apologies, although in the past I tend to get them after the meeting started. So, if I find them, you know, on my laptop, can I include them?
Absolutely, yes. If they come during the course of the meeting, those apologies can be included. I will have to memo councillors though because we are continuing to be thin on the ground on recent council meetings and that needs improvement, but we are corset so we will proceed. So, I don't believe there are any declarations of interest either. So, we'll, first of all, the minutes of the February or the non-confidential section of the February council meeting minutes, I have a comment to make, but do any other councillors have any comments to make on last month's minutes, please, on the non-confidential section?
No.
Okay. One point I have, Bob, for amendment, if councillors agree, is section 281, which was the budget discussion from last month. The budget being proposed, seconded, agreed and then unanimously voted. I think we need to make a statement in addition to the fact that it was proposed and seconded. I think we need to say a vote was taken and the budget was unanimously approved. Would councillors agree with that additional comment?
I, yes, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it clearly was proposed and seconded. So, if councillors agree, Bob, could you amend item X, section 281 to read "A vote was taken and the budget was unanimously approved", which it was? Okay, thank you for that. I've got no other comments on the non-confidential section of the minutes. So, if councillors are happy with that amendment, could I have a proposer and a seconder to accept them as a true record, please?
I propose.
Thank you Margaret, thank you Sue. So, that's Margaret and Sue. So, that's the non-confidential section of the minutes of February meeting approved. Right, reverting to the agenda then. Police matters, Bob. We've got police as the item two. Any feedback from Griffiths or anyone else?
No, I've not had any, I've not had any reply from Maggie at all and we've had some problems up at Myl Oak Recreation Ground and I know that the members of the public up there, they haven't had a response. So, perhaps I'll have to do a bit of digging on that one because it's proven almost impossible to get in touch with Maggie.
I think we do need some feedback from the police, particularly with regard to the situation on the Myl Oak car park where we're now closing the gates again of an evening. But if residents have also been trying to contact Maggie as well as ourselves, we do, we do need some feedback from the, from the police. So, if you could make some, try and make some progress on that, please, Bob.
Yep.
Item three then, progress report and actions, please.
If we, if we go to page one, we've got additional notice board. I, well, actually, Anker rang me actually to say that regarding the notice board on the Sandu retail outlet, he's running out of space on the wall. But what he's prepared to do is put a couple of posts in for us to put a notice board on on the posts. And in fact, he rang me today to say that he hasn't, he's got his builders in hand to do something, but he hasn't done anything as yet. But I'm not surprised about that because he did ask me for a photograph of the notice board and I hadn't got his mobile. So, we've agreed I'll send him the photograph and away we go. So, I'll get an idea where he's thinking of putting this notice board and then come back to the council. But, you know, I think it's very good that he's finding an alternative because he's run out of space on, well, he's advertising space on the side of the building.
Fine, okay, thank you.
If we go over the page to the clerks' report, we've got the War Memorial. I've been on to the War Memorial Trust about our state of our War Memorial and a couple of things have come out of it. I've been speaking to a guy there who's very helpful. And first of all, the grants that they give and we would qualify for a grant. It comes to fifty, fifty percent to seventy-five percent of the cost. However, because of the, the level of the repair cost, we've got to, or they would organise it actually, the Memorial Trust will organise a survey to be undertaken by Historic England. There is a level, if repair costs are over £10,000, it is, it is a stipulation that they get Historic England to come and have a look at this. And so, we're at that stage, they're going to, they're going to progress it. The parking of the vehicles on Litchfield Street opposite the boat house, that's ongoing. And we did clarify about the yellow lines going up to the houses and the three tons, which Alex actually has inquired about that. Mill House opposite the town hall. I've spoken at length with Simon, who's, he's the director of the company that's doing it. And he's quite willing to have a site meeting. He has said this before, but what he said to me is if we can give him a date, I don't know, Brian, are you, are you interested on this one to, to go along and meet Simon and have a chat what they're doing? They are ploughing a lot of money into it. Both scaffolding and workers. So, he just needs a date and he'll meet us there. I mean, I don't mind meeting him to see what he's got to say. Looks quite interesting. He said he'd show us around and this sort of thing. So, you know, he's being quite outgoing about it. I think I've said that before. Regarding the mill house, he can't wait to have that pulled down, but evidently some regulations or clearance regulations have got to be issued by Litchfield District Council. And bearing in mind their usual pedestrian state of play, I couldn't believe him. So, he said as soon as he gets that, he, you know, the mill house will be coming down. He estimates, he did originally say by the end of March, but he's putting it now four to six weeks and it should come down. Okay.
Just before, just before you carry on, the answer to your question is yes, I, I mean, hopefully outside we can have a sort of a Covid-safe meeting with him in, in, in the fresh air there, but I would be keen with yourself and any other councillor who wish to attend to have a brief outside meeting with him, just, just to, you know, hear it directly, what their plans are. Hopefully, they're keen to proceed with that development as we are also to improve the street scene of the area particularly. So, you know, I will talk separately about that. And then if we do get a date, I'll email councillors to let councillors know. If they wish to attend any meeting, you can arrange, but it would be nice to have a brief face-to-face with them, certainly.
Yep.
Happy to attend if I'm available.
Okay, we'll let you know.
That one. Then going down to town hall and youth, Alex, that's Staffordshire County Council continuing to use the town hall one afternoon a week. Actually, they might increase it to one day a week to do the Covid tests. And the youth, Alex, is still carrying on with the maternity group. Over the page, just mentioned that the Telecom Mast, they appear to, after no end of visits there, they seem to have solved the repair, repair and maintenance problems that they were having with that Telecom Mast. And I think that's it. Yep. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, we did have a correspondence over the page on page four. We've got parishioners' letter dated the 22nd of January. Material and fence panels at the end, at the end of Plantation Lane. I've had no reply from the two guys who are now covering Tim Hemmingsley, so I'll send a reminder on that. I don't know whether James has got anywhere with empty houses in Bow Hill.
Last time I spoke to him, I think he hadn't any response, so, but I've left that with him.
You spoke to the lady concerned, didn't you? She hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, I, I've actually spoken directly to Mrs Tonks who wrote the letter, just to ensure that she received the email that I put together following our last meeting, which she had. And again, for clarification, I said that you were talking to County Highways in relation to the materials dumped in the fence plant at the plantation. With regard to litter, we were monitoring that situation. I did say to her that James Parton Hughes would be talking to LDC about the issue of empty houses in Bow Hill and would correspond with her directly, but I've heard nothing from James on that matter. And then, of course, we've got the clarification of the land ownership adjacent to Robert Peel, which is, which is ongoing. So, sorry to cut in there, but I did, I did speak to Mrs Tonks to ensure she'd received the initial reply.
I did wonder actually, Mr Mayor, why are we looking into the land ownership of this land next to the, I don't, I don't, I wondered, what, is it our job to inform a parishioner who owns a piece of land? Surely they should do it themselves?
I suppose, you know, we, we can if we so desire and I guess we said we look into it, but they could look into it. Also, the potential usage. I seem to have in the back of my mind, actually, I will check that. I'm just wondering if that triangular piece of land at the back of Robert Peel was part of, or is part of LDC Local Plan with some possible housing intended for that section of land, but I'm not clear. For my own peace of mind, I may actually check that, but, you know, I guess it's to answer you, you know, your job as a town clerk, I guess it's, it's not our job as such to clarify that, but if we've agreed with the parishioner, we'll look into it, which we said we would, I guess we can look into it. I think the more important thing is what the potential usage is.
Well, I was thinking if there are other requests, can the town council find out who owns this piece of land or that piece of land? Or the one over there? I think we should draw a line under that sort of thing, Mr Mayor. I mean, as regards to the land in question, which is the land by the, between the Robert Peel, Hospital and Bona Road, if I remember right, that large piece of land there, that was certainly one that she, the lady in question was asking about. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, well, I've been on to Land Registry and it's owned by a family, I don't wish to name the family, it's a public meeting, but that piece of land is owned by a family in Drayton Bassett and not by the hospital.
Okay.
And it's a value of £200,000 or when it was bought it was. But, and that's public knowledge because that's, you know, it's on the Land Registry, that is.
Yes, yes, yes.
When I was researching this, I was thinking, why, why are we doing this?
Well, I suppose in future, I suppose in future, we should just refer any members of the public who ask us to the relevant authority and say, please contact the authority directly to, you know, to find the answer. We can direct them rather than, as you say, take on that responsibility as such. But in this particular case, it was one of a number of questions which I think in principle we agreed to try and respond to, but well, thank you for that information. So, there is an owner of the land, you know.
Yeah, I, I thought, I would have to say that, Mr Mayor and councillors, I thought the hospital would own it, but they don't. A family in, a family in, in Drayton Bassett own it and
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's it.
Anyway, thank you for that clarification. Does that complete the
It does, Mr Mayor, yes.
Progress, board and actions. Okay, thank you for that then, Bob. Brings us to item four, town mayor's announcements. And again, in these very restrictive Covid times, I have no announcements this month, so there's nothing further to say on item four. Item five, questions to the mayor, has anything been received at all?
No, Mr Mayor, nothing at all on that one.
So, item five, questions to the mayor, deputy mayor of town clerk, understanding order 11. Nothing's been received in that respect. As I said earlier, item six actually was an error because clearly the budget was one-off for last month. So,
Well, that's, that's my apology actually. I should have took that off. So, my apology.
If I'd have talked that earlier, we'd have reissued the agenda, but for clarification, if that gets published, we are striking item six. If you could just make a note of that for the minutes, Bob. We're striking item six from the agenda which was published in error. So, that brings us to item seven then, the clerks' report, please.
Yep, just some things just to mention to update councillors. I certainly lost the plot as regards to the telephone box next to the defibrillator on the, on the town hall square, because since the last meeting, it's disappeared. And I noticed it had gone and we, we did have some correspondence about telephone boxes that weren't being used. And I know that was one of them, maybe eighteen months, two years ago. But I have to report that British Telecom have now removed it. I would say also on that one, it was a target for vandalism on a particularly irregular basis. So, I, I don't know whether that's influenced them, but certainly the glass panels were smashed on a regular, as I say, regular basis.
That's interesting because I do recall that same conversation and if, if Jo was present, I think she'd have a lot to say about that because I believe we did respond to a question from whatever authority, British Telecom, I'm not quite sure, but there was a request that box be retained because of its location for possible emergency use. I believe at that time it had a stay of execution and clearly, you know, was, was left at our behest. But I hadn't actually been down there recently, so I hadn't noticed it's gone. So, British Telecom decided to remove it completely.
Yes. Another thing is that I was talking to Jo actually, and actually councillor, as I must mention, Jo did put her apologies in because she was struggling with I was trying to help her get online with a tablet and we're going to have another teaching session on, on Wednesday of this week. But she did say if she couldn't get online, could we put our apologies in? So, Mr Mayor, is it possible to record Jo's apologies?
I'm glad you brought that up because we should have, because of Jo and Jean, their inability to use IT and social media, we said we would record each month on an ongoing basis until we can sit down together. We will record their apologies. So, we should record every month councillor Jo Atkins and Jean Dan's apologies because they are actually unable to attend the Zoom meeting, not that they're, and they'd be more than willing to attend. And we do hope, as you say, with Jo's attempt to get connected, and I have spoken to her and she's even emailed me that she will be connected soon.
Yep.
So, yes, we should record Jo and Jean, please, as, with apologies, we must do that. Oh, good evening, Olivia.
Good evening.
Hi, Olivia.
Well, thanks for attending anyway. Thanks for attending.
Just to continue with these, these, these items under the clerks' report. The chapel by the canal bridge at Faysley, they've made a bit of a mess connecting up the utilities there on the pavement and putting in various boxes there. So, I was going to, in fact, I've already sent an email off to Staffordshire County Council Highways to have a look and inspect it, but it's definitely not up to standard. Bearing in mind, I have bad dealings with this particular thing personally, I can say it's far worse than I've experienced. So, we've, we have written off asking them to inspect it. Someone managed to rip off drain pipes off the town hall and have replaced those. The gas boiler in the town hall was serviced and the safety certificate for a public building was issued. So, that's, that's been done. The town mayor authorised me to get fuse, a fuse boxes or fuse box, sorry, replaced in the youth annex. It burnt out and was causing some concern to the nurses using there, but we had, we solved that one and sorted it out very quickly. And also, our Andy Van Paul has removed the, I use this word and I think it's appropriate, decrepit planter from the triangle at Bow Hill and replaced it with a more robust, robust one. Which, Mr Mayor, I think it looks quite, quite good actually. So, that planter has been replaced.
I'm just going to excuse myself for a second. My buyer was run out, bear with me. But no, thank you for, the, the Bow Hill planter, thank you, i- is a great improvement and the new one being made out of large but modern sleepers, I think will last a decade or six.
Right. Just to move on councillors, I mean, Brian's not going to miss anything on this one, but the county and district councillors' reports, we've, we've had nothing on that at all. That's from, you know, Alan from the county, James, the district. Any reports there? Okay. Shall I? Oh, yeah, Brian's back. We then go on to planning. We have had three planning applications in, in the parish. The first one is 24 Born Avenue, Faysley. It's a first floor side extension to form bedroom and en suite over previously approved extension. You know, it didn't, it didn't look anything out of the way, that one. Second one is, this one is Three Fox Hollow Drive, Myl Oak. Now, that's a two-storey extension to the front, following removal of the existing front-facing dormer and installation of two roof lights in existing rear roof slope of dwelling house. Okay. And then finally, we have this one, which is number 11. Is that near you, Olivia? Olivia, number 11? Are you 15? Like I say here, number 11, Sutton Road, Myl Oak. Demolition of garage followed by erection of single-storey rear extension and double-storey side and rear extension, along with erection of a porch to the front.
Is the planning only just come through for that?
Fifth of March, yes.
Because I've already started that work, so.
It should be retrospective. It doesn't say retrospective. Oh, it does say, there's a comment here, resubmission of a previous application from last year.
Ah, okay.
Amendments. What I would suggest on this one, Olivia, is because that's relatively close to you, isn't it?
Yes, it's one dollar away.
Yeah, so if I put that you declared an interest.
Please, Bob, that would be fantastic.
I think the limit is a hundred metres, but so if I say, Olivia.
Thank you very much.
There we are. That's it. That's planning.
Okay, so correspondence then, please, Bob.
We, we have, I'll, I think I'll leave this one to private and confidential. It doesn't in fact clash with anything, but I'll just put that one on side. Litchfield District Council have issued a economic newsletter for businesses in the district. And they call that the LDC Business News. And that one targets such things as Brexit Support Fund, Pay As You Grow, Cultural and Creative Social Enterprises Project, Lockdown Easing Timeline. What's that? Then we've got notification, I've not personally looked at this, but it's an update regarding the community lottery that the district council are running. And then also, again, the district council, transfer of two city centre car parks to three spires. Okay. Another one from Litchfield District Council is quite an informative one about active Litchfield walks. And it says, get your trainers and your waddies and head out on a health boosting walk in your local area. A report that unfortunately in Beacon Park, they're having to remove two mature trees due to a tree inspector found they both had aggressive forms of fungus that are deadly for trees and that two replacement trees will be planted. And that's it from Litchfield. From Staffordshire County Council, we've had the February newsletter from Everyone Health in Staffordshire. And also Staffordshire County Council, they do a newsletter which is dominated by the Covid-19 and countdown to Staffordshire Day. And also Staffordshire County Council are sending out quite a few updates regarding the coronavirus updates, which they do, which are very informative, that one. I think this one, I shall just, if I can just pull this one out because it will come up in private and confidential. We've had the Parish Council's Association bulletin, which is very informative as well. And updates regarding legal matters. Cayman Company, they're our insurers. They've hidden in quite a lot of insurance policies, actually domestic and that's residential and business, are limitations about use of properties. Usually it revolves around the standard is forty-five days. You can't go, you can't leave it for more than forty-five days. Well, what insurers, the brokers have done is negotiated with our insurers. That, that one is not applicable, bearing in mind the Covid and lockdown restrictions. As it happens, you know, we do do checks on the town hall, but it's reassuring that if anything difficult comes up regarding use of the hall, forty-five day limitation has gone. Staffordshire Fire Service, they are distributing posters and the poster here is outdoor safety and what are the risks? This is something with spring coming up and summer. I'll put this on the notice board councillors or the notice boards. And that's it on correspondence.
Okay, thank you for that, Bob. Town mayor's powers to act, please.
Yeah, there was, actually on that, there was, there was only two minor things, which was the, the electrical repair at the youth annex, which fortunately the town mayor's got quite a background in electrical matters. So, that one we got on and repaired. And I'm sure I mentioned to the town mayor, or maybe not, about a replacement drop. I think I did, Brian, I'm not sure actually, about the drain pipe that had been ripped off that we
Yes.
got it put back on.
Yes.
That's it, councillors, yeah. The only other thing is authorisation of non-confidential payments. That is the PAYE and that is £730.56. Okay.
£730.56.
Yep.
Right. I would like to discuss some of the issues with regard to the potential housing under the revised local plan at Myl Oak, but there are some financially related aspects to that. So, although I think in future it will be good to have this discussion in open meeting because there are financial connotations at the moment, we'll revert revert to private confidential for that. It's a pity James isn't here today to further that dialogue, but if councillors are happy that any discussions with regard to the potential thousand houses at Myl Oak will defer to private confidential because of financial implications and as that possibly unfolds, I'm hoping we can then bring that back into the public, public section of the meeting. Before we proceed with the confidential section. Before we proceed with the confidential section, is there, we've cleared quite quickly this evening, the relevant agenda items. Is there anything else that any councillors wish to bring up under the public section of the meeting, please, before we continue? Anything that, and thank you, Bob, for your various reports, because anything that we need to clear on the non-confidential at all? Okay, if not, then if councillors are happy, we will proceed to the confidential section of the meeting. And as a formality, I must ask all members of the public and press to leave, which in this electronic world means, could somebody please disconnect the YouTube feed? But thank you to any members of the public who've been listening this evening and thank you for joining us. Hopefully, we will see.